Mitchell.
Here.
Thompson.
Here.
All right, everybody present in the county. Uh, consent agenda. Any other discussion or comments anything? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Four ayes, no, not opposed, motion carries. All right, you might want to do a corn carnival. If you want to like to volunteer. All right, this is.
I get not to any reason to read the whole.
No, this is basically, uh, it's exactly the same thing we did last year. We're gonna have the corn box, we're gonna have the petting zoo, uh, we're gonna borrow this, ask the borough city banquet tables, uh, we have our local, which we've already, uh, city municipal stake, we have a three year celebration of Lake Waco County. Aren't we going to the town on Monday, the eighth? Different date, that's last week's day, even Monday before the, you mean, it seems like fourteen, all right, whatever. And the vendors that are approved, um. So.
Well, it's pretty sad this change.
We may add some, maybe add some. We just need a motion to approve these, uh, events. Is there a second? Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, abstaining.
Aye.
All opposed. So we have three ayes, one abstention, and not opposed, motion carries. All right. Now we have a resolution concerning the hazardous, hazard mitigation plan in the city of Lake City. This is something emergency management commission and board supervisors adopted this for all the cities and for all county and school districts and, uh, I'm gonna, I guess I'll leave this resolution. This is resolution fifteen dot six dot eight dot one. Whereas of Lake City, Iowa is a risk for normal and manmade hazards. And whereas of T Stafford, Robert T Stafford Act of four oh four provides post-hazard mitigation assistance through the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program. Whereas of Disaster Mitigation Act of two thousand amended that to require communities to have a plan in order to be available to receive funds. Whereas the Federal Emergency Management Administration issued a notice of funding availability. Whereas the grant is awarded county. Contact with Robin Reese Emergency Plan Consultant to prepare the plan update. Whereas the city of Lake City updated hazard mitigation plan to bend the city of the county plan there to attach to their part there. We got a whole notebook.
And anybody can come up and look at this and see if we have any questions about it.
Yeah, create the whole thing. Whereas, Lake City provide opportunities, whereas the hazard mitigation plan for Waco County may be available for public comment. Now therefore be it resolved that we adopt the hazard mitigation plan in the city of Lake City.
Okay, I have a couple of things that I was talking around that I was reading. It said in two thousand and that this was, um, kind of like, uh, started called receiving funds. Now, just receiving the funds, if there is a hazard or the sort of they get grants at the time, and if they get grants, because they don't even know what portion of the town to us, or that based on.
Based on population and, uh, less opposedes. We've got, we don't think it, we have a river collection we get water here. We don't hear about it because most counties don't really have water. But, uh, something like our tomato, Big Drew, or something like that. Dr. Martin's store, Nick Martinez, the new emergency manager, manager of Waco County. He's had a lot of experience in feeding and all these things, so. I don't think they just say, here's a check, but it's a grant that you're in community, you need it, or you can get a certain amount.
Basically, it's all put into a fund, take the day of the explosion. You had to, you know, to everybody from, to everybody from home to the fire station. The food, the water, everything that's paid out there was not paid by the city of Lake City, that was paid by the, uh, the emergency manager.
So, we hope that never happens again, because that's what the score, that's where it goes.
Oh, another question. I was kind of reading in here, and it looks like, um, some of the things that are established are based on what we are able to do with what we have here. So if something else happens, do they bring people in, maybe from other, um, departments? Or is it something they're gonna require training or upgrading on? How does that work?
There'll probably be some training after something, but if something happened here that would be beyond our ability, we probably have more people getting to do any things in the state than state law. But, yeah, if something happens, you know, if we can't handle it, there'll be people from county, or state, or, uh, people.
I think it does the most important work from the terminology, like all those suspects and stuff, we have, we have to keep the threat. And that's what it does eventually, if there is a disaster, if you're able to, you know. I, I have a police department, so I have to know what my job was and the natural stats I had and what's worrying them. And that's what they try to train you on is, you know, so everybody's not coming around to say, okay, you know, this is your job when something happens.
No, we have, the, what we do in Waco County Emergency Management Commission may as well have chairman of the board of supervisors and the mayors of cities and, uh, the director, and so. I'm just so, but I'm pretty sure there's some payments for it to be required. If there were to be a hazard, like the one that you have or something, this would be, for the fire department, one would be the headquarters. And someone would be kind of coordinated or at least people would check in and out with, and probably would be the city for, uh, as far as, you know, with that. Like I said, if it happened, we couldn't handle it, there might be more people there.
So if this requires training, do our people, um, who's responsible for paying it? Is the county gonna pay for it, or is our fire department?
Yes, the emergency management commission, you can pay for it.
Okay, I was just kind of curious about that too, because I've been concerned as well.
Yes. Okay, any other questions, comments? Comment actually after you finish, I'm sorry. Okay, uh, I need a motion that we approve this resolution dot fifteen dot six dot eight dot one concerning hazard mitigation plan. Is there a second? Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Four ayes, and not opposed, motion carries. Resolution for the library. Is there someone from the library that said, the parents have a fund that they're going to. Basically, what the library has asked, uh, any funds that are remaining in the library account beginning of twenty fifteen, which is June thirtieth, be traded over to the library's account for due up, that's why, finance year twenty sixteen. And the funds traded will be used by the library working for the library equipment, furnishings, and facilities, and for the building investment. I don't know if they're going to get rich on what money they left over, but, uh, this is what they were asking, and I don't think they'll see a problem with it. Any other discussion?
I need a motion to, uh, um.
And that's resolution fifteen dot six dot eight dot two.
I made a motion, I meant resolution fifteen dot six dot eight dot two. Did I get it right?
Yes, you did, you got all the dots.
The, uh, uh.
Is there a second? All right, motion, is there a second? And now, before, didn't have, we would have all periods, but now we have a, a, a dots. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, the same sign. Four ayes, and not opposed, motion carries. Yep. And all right, next on the agenda, park hedges. As you'll recall, last fall, one of our, we voted to go ahead and, uh, remove the hedges. And take them out. The garden club has come and asked that we would allow them to, uh, clean the hedges, get rid of the trees and poison ivies, and then trim the hedges, and then maintain them being trimmed. Um, the thing regarding the, uh, you know, how tall are forty two ivies? That's what the tents would be, thirty six and forty two inches. And they would pay to have that, uh, if that's the case, we would need a motion to, uh, allow them to do that. Rescind our previous action. Is there something we have to especially rescind, is that chairman just making a motion or something?
Um, usually, that's what I.
Is there a second? All right, all those in, is there any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same sign. And one abstention because he's in the garden club. So we have three ayes, one abstention, and not opposed, motion carries. Next, we got. This is from Bob too. Bob, Bob, you're right, you must come in this. Bob made a donation to the Library Building Fund last fall.
Uh, two thousand fourteen, I think, in the spring.
In the spring of two thousand fourteen. What he'd like to do, and I talked to him, Heather, she said that there's nothing, I mean, if he just wants to go ahead and do that, that's fine. But she thought that we probably should, uh, have a hearing concerning that. We transfer that to the Building Fund of the Transient Library.
Right.
Which is a five one C three, uh, I'm gonna read the letter, and then I'm gonna pass to the, uh, make the motion to have a hearing July thirteenth, is it my name right? I've taken a couple of comments on this. Oh, yes, can't, but soon we got something to do next day. At least you know there'll be two things on the agenda that day. Uh, on May thirteenth, two thousand fourteen, I made a donation to Lake City Library Fund, Building Fund, check number. This letter formally requests a full non-admission, transferred into the light, uh, Lake City Library, but the Transient Library, Public Library, and Building Fund, a non top organization. My information is intended to support the building and the library in Lake City, this time I understand, this building by there is a hole, it may not be afforded. My desire that this money be used to support the library, and I feel that this best accomplishment of the Transient Library, of the Library. I'm requesting to place on the agenda what you was, and also request the action to take in that meeting, which we can't do, uh, we could, but we're not going to. I prefer the request that you provide your writing, your written assurance and all that kind of stuff. And then we signed it here, and made every copies. CC always cut, you were on here, cut and copy. I mean, it's, why, why does that? From the different name. Heather was still. I talked to Heather about this, she said she looked in the code, there's nothing that says that we can't just go ahead and say, yes, do it. There's nothing in the wall. She said, but under the circumstances, she felt that it would be better if we set a public hearing on this in the middle of July and then vote on it. So that's gonna be my recommendation, recommendation. Nothing would happen about him from now on, but she said, if he was, if he is passed away, and this was a, it'd be a whole, you know, since he's, he's here, and this is made a request, there shouldn't be any reason we can't do it. But my recommendation is that we schedule a public hearing on July thirteenth at seven before the other public hearing, uh, concerning this transfer of the funds to the Transient Library. So, is there a? Yes.
Okay. The only other caveat on the island is that somebody from the final, let's see, who should make a request for, uh, to the, uh, city council.
We have someone.
I will make a request. With the money we transfer from the city to the Transient Library.
So we have a request, we have the letter, if we're willing to do that.
I will make a motion for the early hearing on July thirteenth, and some of the money from the Library Fund, from the Building Fund, to the Library.
Is there a second? Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, the same sign. Motion carries. Four ayes, and no abstention. All right, moving right along. Building Fund. Building Fund, yes, obviously. It won't be in his lifetime, so I'll be all for it. So we have three buildings, and I, we asked the person to do it this way, this that way, so. We nash on them as they are. The only one out there is is going to, uh, build another building, we put more stuff in. He talked to me, he's all, all, down behind his building. Actually, he's gonna build, if he was putting behind his house, he wouldn't have to come to us. If he's gonna put it on City property, definitely top of the hill where he was going to build his house, that's in the city limits, so that's why he's asking for building to manage to do that. I need a motion concerning this building. I'm gonna, I'm gonna, all right, is there a second? Of course, uh, the motion didn't, I mean, a second, is there any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same sign. Four ayes, and not opposed, motion carries. Kenneth Martin. The building, the, that hallway, run by, by the sea store. And he would have that option sign, if I thought, what in the world, right, if there is, right, well, he said it's huge, I think. He's going to be, he met into a place to live. Right now it's a garage, and there's, uh, he was a residential, but right now what he's asking to do is to pour a concrete pad behind this, back to the alley. I understand, I, yes. Something that, so when he, he drives a truck in there or something, whatever, his car and, uh.
Little, little, two's out.
No, it's not, it's a twenty, it's a twenty foot pad behind the building, so it won't go quite, so we can pull it up there and get in under, do the thing, get in the world, I didn't name on it. All right, so I need a motion concerning this building. Make a motion, make a move, a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same sign. Motion carries, four ayes, and not opposed. Third one, Jerry Harland. He said that he brought this up to Jason months ago, but he can't find it. This is a throw on what that trailer's gonna look like when it's done. He's working. Yeah, it's a curve. It's gonna be, if he finishes, it looks like this, it's gonna be very good. It looks nice, it already looks nice, it was in the tour, but he, he had to, and if he hadn't, I told him, if he didn't get it in today, he was gonna try to save the system on his property and find his job. Yeah, so, I need a motion concerning this building. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same sign. Motion carries, four ayes, and not opposed. All right, clerk training in Ames. She, this, the municipality of Professionals Institute, Alberta got a scholarship, she should take this training. And the thing is that, if she takes this training, she will be certified for the budget and for the financial report, and a financial report.
Yeah, and clerk's supposed to be certified in some things, could you be certified in clerk, would you be certified in financial? And this will hit.
Both of those, so, uh, it's in Ames, and it's seven days, five one day, one week.
It's a two week academy, and I applied for scholarship, and they put me to work, and they pay for all, all my training for the two weeks. I just have to pay for my fuel, I'll pay for my meals, or hotel. I, hotel be a hundred dollars, current wind all of my pleasure, and hotel be, be cheap, I'll continue driving, I don't mind driving every day. I just don't have it in the hotel. I, I'm just saying, you know, either way, they put the hotel for a hundred million dollars, but then you have eighteen dollar service fee for the hotel fee. So you gotta add that on top of that, so it's two for me to drive. I think the first day is, uh, like, four days.
It's four days, one day, and three days, and that.
The next, yeah, but I did, like, seven day, or I don't have to pay for that, because they, they granted me a scholarship.
What were you talking about, you wanna?
One, one I had suggested to Bill is that you pay for your, uh, hotel, uh, in bulk, and, uh, twenty five dollars per day of bill.
I mean, that's, that's just options, I, that's what costs me.
Uh, because, you know, it costs more to eat when you're out of, uh, it's not like you're running home, getting something out of the cupboard. So, I take a twenty five dollars, I mean, you allow us to, you know, figure five dollars for breakfast, and ten dollars for lunch, and, uh, so, and that might be a little short.
If you look at the fund, that one needs to tell you, I mean, they can't tell you all the things, I'll be, I'll be, why, why the courts have a requirement certification, that, I mean, that's, that's gonna cost me all, for me.
Yeah, I mean, driving to Ames on Monday, and riding back on Friday's not a good deal. Like, to me, driving up and back four days, you know.
I mean, how do I look at it? I'm gonna have to leave early in the morning and go and get up there. I mean, you got to.
Yeah, I mean, it's very, I wonder if that was just.
To me, I mean, I, if you, you may not want to stay every night, but I think that, I'm gonna, we ought to leave the house.
I don't care about that, that's okay.
And that'd be, that's fine, that's fine for me, that's, but if you wanna, if we pay for our hotel, and.
Oh, that's hard to be, like, I said, I just don't want to.
Okay, that's, give someone to make that a motion.
Oh, that's better than a motion.
Okay, the motion is, are you gonna take your hotel and the twenty five dollars today? You're gonna bring them all, you're gonna, that's okay. For damn.
And there's a couple of bills I can get here throughout, but it doesn't have, so.
Okay, so, uh.
And plus Marley, give him a better breath.
Yeah. Okay, is there a second to that motion? All right, the movement is seconded, that, you, two of us here, you got it written down. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same sign. Four ayes, zero opposed, motion carries.
And there's just one, one, does the names also, the S F R?
Yes.
I just received that statement, I had to voice, I had to bring that time, because I have to have, get money for it, it's the S F R. The reports we have to send, and you're, they're having to get into a training class in Ames.
Sort of a conjunction of the same things.
July sixteenth, and it's just a, a shot, they're gonna supply the mail, um, it's very, um, it's like, such as for new clerks that don't know anything about making these S F R reports, and you get your money for, uh.
I think we just, we didn't dedicate it to the community, just to say that in the motion that the clerk's training, okay? I don't know what happened, do you know what's going on? Say that aloud. Clerk training, Lake City, what tobacco permit? This is just the same thing that we.
It's a renewal.
Yeah.
We made the motion, we're through.
Is there any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Signify by saying aye. All opposed, the same sign. Motion's carried, four ayes, and not opposed. You know, we don't charge you. Some of the big cities charge two or three hundred dollars for a red. You go to renew your liquor license issue, we'll try to get to young time before they have to call you and tell you where it is. Last year, we had a problem, I think. All right, now we're down to the fire department donation. This is, uh, I just want to read it. Sewer project, oh, that's right, we're gonna skip that. Can I give them a little bit? Yes, please. Okay.
I've never met, you have to say the acronym, I stood, I'm sorry. The rest of the acronym, I don't know, I may have altered. And what we have tonight is drawing some specifications for your second phase of your C E D G sewer project, which is sewer lining, the second half of the sewer. It also includes, uh, cleaning the sledge out of the lagoon. Got a letter, I won't read all this, but I'll try to, I mean, just jump kind of over it and paraphrase it a little bit. Um, there's seven thousand feet of each sewer to line, um, cleaning the lagoon, there's, it's roughly three hundred semi-trailer truck loads of slugs to come out of there. So quite a few truckloads that are gonna come up through town, probably go south out of town to our, to a farm field. Um, we've put that your bid opening would be at your next council meeting, July, uh, July thirteenth. And estimated cost, we've broken it into two separate bids, so there'll be one bid for the sewer lining, and that's estimated at three hundred thirty-five thousand. And the other one is for cleaning the lagoon, and that's estimated at two hundred and ten thousand. Then you need to add R P, attorney fee, administration, uh, those kind of things, ends up with about six hundred and fifty thousand dollar project. You have two hundred ninety-six of grant money, and you have received three hundred and eighty thousand of low interest loan, which is a twenty year, two percent loan, which puts you at six seventy-six, so you have enough money to do that project, based on our bids. Of course, if the bids come in higher than what we've estimated, you could try to come up with money yourself, or you could reduce the scope of the project to, to make it fit your budget. On the other hand, if the project comes, the bids come in much lower, then you might want to, uh, increase the scope of the project and do some other things with your sewer. Or you could reduce the amount of loan there, to do that anyway, and you can make that decision after the bids are on. Um, if you do use that, all, all that loan money, which is three hundred eighty thousand, twenty year, two percent interest, that's going to mean, uh, raising your sewer raise about twelve dollars per customer per month. And I would suggest that you do that maybe over a three year time period, where, um, you could do, um, I was thinking four, 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 to get twelve, and do four this year, four sometime in sixteen, and four dollars in seventeen, but you could do that however you wanna do. Um, and we can look at that closer after the bids are up and see where you are. Um, then some other things about a contract is that the contractor will have to carry three million dollars of general liability insurance, and you'll be in names of additional insurance, and so will we, so if somebody gets hurt, then the insurance company will, will cover their, cover everyone's costs. Of course, of negligence.
The city hall develops in the street.
Like maybe happens in. Um, I did put that down, there's, there's always pitfalls on a project, so, last year you had the big hole open in the street. Um, there can be, uh, interruptions, if they could hit a water main, they could hit, uh, underground, uh, I guess, uh, even a, you know, E E gas line, you know, or something like that. So those kind of things can happen. The sewer lining, first when they put the sewer, the liner through the main, that means that blocks off everyone's service line from their house. So then they go through, and they saw those all out once in a while in this one. And sometimes that shows up within a few hours, if it's a house where it's either vacant, or, or maybe it's a person that, a single person that doesn't use the, the facilities a lot, or maybe it's someone that's on vacation for, it could be a few weeks, or even a few months before that shows up. But sometimes those things do happen, the insurance will cover those kind of things, so it is in the contractor's responsibility. What I was trying to tell you now, but is be aware that you're gonna do, what'd we say, seven hundred thousand dollars worth of work, something's probably going to go wrong. You don't get too shook up about that, we just work our way through it, and we deal with it. Um, the project does carry a two, two year warranty, so you have two years to find those things. That would be for, for faulty materials and workmanship. Um, the contractor's responsible for their own cleanup, but, uh, a few that ready, work down on your house, or lawn, or anything else, you probably know that there's gonna have to do some work that is probably gonna have to do at the end, to clean it up a little bit, and this always happens that way. Um, that's all I have in the latter. If you're ready to proceed, then you have a resolution to read, and then a motion to pass, and with that, you would be setting the date for the public hearing and the bid opening, and we, right now we have it written as seven o'clock at your next meeting, July thirteenth.
So, you wanna meet at seven? Five, you already said, we have much, uh, why?
The, the documents already say seven, so it'd really be tough to change those, but you can have them both scheduled at seven, that's not any problem whatsoever.
Yeah, we all, last year we had a, which I. We all, last year, we had a, which I'm really glad that we chose to do, we chose to do it, because I think a couple of others have chosen, we still have a hole there. So, and when I came home and I saw the, the logo to drive it out of the street, I was like, whoa, that's a big hole.
I just rode by it today, and there's, you know, the big, there is a crack down the center of the lane on the right side, which is where they did not tear it up, but where they did tear it up, that looks in good shape, so they did, yeah, they unpacked it in there several...
What is, uh, anticipated start date?
So if they would open bids in July, probably September would be a start date, and completion date we've written is May of next year. So ideally, they would get all the work done essentially this fall, and then come in and do some final C E D and cleanup and stuff like that this spring. But with, with lining, if it's, uh, reasonably warm, if it's, you know, twenty degrees in the above, they could be doing lining or all that.
And I think I asked this question before, but, you know, we've done half of the city.
Yes.
How is that showing up in the amount of water or the amount of fuel that's in, out there?
I have not seen the record, so I do not know the answer to that.
But, you know, it just kind of, if, if, if we've done half of it, uh, we should've seen a major reduction in the amount of, uh, uh, water that's in the...
And that may or may not happen, I mean, even though you, it's amazing, about half of your sanitary sewers are from the main to the house. So you still, you know, once you got all this done, you still only done half your sewers, really, and all that from up to the house is all owned by the property owner. So it's not a hundred percent fixed, I mean, um, then the intent here is to try to get it reduced far enough down. So right now, what, what's happening is that the lagoon is not big enough to handle all the water that hits there from rainwater. And you're exactly right, with these two phases, what you wanna do is to be able to reduce that, so that that lagoon can handle it. There is still that chance that that will not be successful, and you'll still have to extend it again, so there is, not that friendly thing that's out there.
We're gonna clean the lagoon.
Clean the sledge out, that's right.
That's your bigger, more larger.
Yes, that's it, right.
If you're gonna hold two hundred and some semi-homes.
Yeah, three hundred of them, I think, yeah.
So anybody wants anything in their yard, or town, or something else.
It would go to an A and T a lot.
And I think, I talked to a couple people that, you know, the crops are out, which is something that everyone would be, when that...
All right, they would definitely go for the crops.
Well, is there a market to sell that, uh?
You know, in some places there are, you know, North Carolina, the, one of the cities did that, and they sold it, but around here, finding somebody to take it, it's, uh, it's sort of, it's a different...
There's a fertilizer that you can buy to get, uh, it's called Melonite, or no? Yeah, there you go, say it.
Norinite.
Right, which is the waste from the city of Milwaukee, so they actually take it and bag it and sell it in bags, you know, that, so, you're not that situation, to do that.
All right, so let me read this resolution. I'm not gonna read the whole thing, I'm gonna skim it. This is resolution fifteen dot six dot eight dot three. Resolution provided notice of appearing on proposed plan specifications for the contract, estimate the cost of sanitary sewer improvement project, and trust in taking the bids thereof. Uh, we have deemed it necessary desire, after we be in our E D A command and chapter, uh, for proposed plans, which may therefore refer to the sanitary sewer improvement project. The document's on file, we do have a, the official copy of what should be done in the office, if somebody wants to come up and look there and see, and the map is there, where it's gonna be doing what.
Actually, this is the official, official, the one you have signed there is, was not signed, but it's, I mean, the one you have there, it's all signed, this one.
We do have, well, that's the official, we do have the one that we do organize there. Uh, be a resolve, let's see, what's for resolve, the contract documents, the personnel, the animal, your other, your wife, who, project is a necessary desire, we can see, that's the same, which is the amount of bids, security, company, each bid, takes a ten percent of total bid amount. Council hereby delegates the city clerk to do the receiving bids until seven o'clock P M on July thirteenth. At such time, the council chambers the bid will be opened, and the results of such bid will be publicly read and considered. City council, the city clerk's here, our pleasure, that can give notice of hearing, taking the bids, and that, we're gonna do that, but the council can give it, tackle what she needs to do. All provisions are set out in the following one notice hereby recognized and prescribed. All right, I just need a motion to approve resolution fifteen dot six dot eight dot three. Okay, there's a... All right, and moving to second, any other discussion? All those favor signify by saying aye. All those are closed, the same sign, motion carries, four ayes, none opposed. And then I also have copies of the, of the, for later. Now we're down to the fire department donation. Have a card here. This is a donation of twenty-three hundred and eighty dollars to one of those grain bin and rescue equipments. I just watched on T V that the kid with film and bring it in, I think it was out in Norwalk, whatever, and they, and, why would somebody think it was sooner? They just, they, basically, they make a mini grain bin, a rounder, and they take the corn out of that, and it reads it, but this was, uh, built, this, my name is donated to the fire and rescue department. This contribution is given with love and respect to our family members, Linda and Ralph Owen, as they mourn their loss, and Linda's father Archie Owen. Please add our contribution to, to the memorial fund, and we hope it's used, honored Archie's life, and relates to Bob and Kenny Patrick. So, uh, there's no voting, and they take our message, that's, I thought it'd be good to get that in the record, and the donation that, uh, was, we have a couple grain bins around here, and, uh, we grew up to, and we got some big ones, and I know that if you're listening and, you know, talking about it, usually after the first half hour, maybe an hour, that becomes a rare recovery, it's a rescue, you know, it's all right. You know, didn't you guys go to some trainings for one of that, I thought that they had them, and gone to the trainings, so now that we have the equipment, and we really believe something happened, we can, we can help save a lot. All right.
And there will be, still working for the fire department, closest one to those right now, so...
Yeah, yeah, you know, it seems like in the community which you live, that, uh, it's, it's not an option, it's something that everybody should have, what should be there. All right, now we're down to prove petition for special election. There was a petition for special election that we received in time, and... The woman, I'm sorry, okay? The woman, I have a little map, what it is, is they, the Woodland Warrior motorcycles, right, is that not right? Are gonna come into town July eighteen. I lost my map, it's here. And they want permission to close off, uh, High Street from the alley where the car wash is, to Main Street here, on July eighteen, and for how long is that going to be?
I have to just say eighteen.
All day, nudes will...
It's a kind of a poker run, so they will filter in and out most of the day.
Okay.
Well, probably till four or five, they'll all be gone.
Okay, so it's gonna be like from eight o'clock to five, or something like that, okay?
Or nine or ten till five or six, something like that.
Well, that's something I had to hear with, uh, ongoing business of, uh, car washes.
Uh, they saw that access from the other side, from, uh, that Cass Street, the acreage tree?
Yeah, Cass.
I get confused with these streets, I, uh, they could still have access to get the car washed there, because they're gonna do it, based on the, your property to, to, to the main, to the state street. Uh, any other discussion, or, all right, your second?
Who's second?
All right, and moving seconded. All those favor signify by saying aye. All those are closed, the same sign, motion carries, four ayes, zero opposed. Uh, yeah, three to six. All right. Now then, we're gonna approve the, the special election, uh, petition was signed by the number of people that need to be signed, as we referred to, we did, Governor Alberta, within fourteen days after the mayor was appointed, so therefore, we required to schedule a special election. The auditor, I talked with them, they will set that date after we contact them in the morning, and give them paperwork, and we approve it, you know, and we ask them for special election. So, since there's gonna be a special election, there, not only will the mayor be on the special seat, only if you live out, but my position will be on the ballot. And Cindy's position, which she's going to remain, in terms of, Vicki's, will be on the ballot. My position will be, uh, be likely to serve just till November, but that's my original position, it's, uh, it's prior. Cindy, uh, Vicki's position ends in two thousand seventeen, so whoever wins that seat will serve until two thousand seventeen, whoever wins two thousand, September, three versus two thousand seventeen. So, if there was no special election, those other two seats would not be voted on, they would be, they were appointed, we would count them points, and so my seat or her seat would go. Since there is a election, it's the way the law is written, since it's already gonna be one, uh, there won't be one. Those two under two seats will be on, will be on the ballot. So, uh, being that said, I need a motion to, to, uh, ask the, the auditor of Auburn County to schedule a special election for the city of Westfield. Move, is your second? Make you different, really, you want to... No, I'm second, but, I'm gonna ask, uh, any other discussion? All those favor signify by saying aye. All those are closed, the same sign, motion carries, four ayes, zero opposed, motion carries, so, we're not, I want you to type something up, and I'll sign it, you sign it, and we'll, that's it.
They just said, copy in the next, they, 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 they're just in the morning.
So, it will be, it won't be voted before thirty-two days, that's what we have to do. I'm gonna ask you to schedule that for the first Tuesday in November. That's, that's a regular election, I don't think that'll happen, but, yeah, so they, they will let us know when that election's gonna be. Yes. All right, public comments. I got it here, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, all right. Being that, old business, uh, this is something we asked the fire department to do quarterly, and, uh, other Jimmy, he got this, Michael brought it tonight, is, we had, we just break down the twenty-nine calls from January first to June seventh. We've had twenty-nine calls, ten medicals, seven fire, ten accidents, and two others. Did you get a cattle or a tree or a, I don't know, all, I understand you did that. Trucks have responded to the fire call by number, and you can see, uh, the trucks have had, and currently have twenty active volunteers, and we see them dedicated outstanding individuals, is there anybody that wants to, uh, volunteer? And this, as you can see, in the report. And there's nothing made of vote on this, most of these can have the information of what's going on. All right, is there any other old businesses?
Just gave you a rest, and some things coming out of, we are getting radios, and we are going digital on our fire alarm, to help to broaden our perspective on, uh, communicate to our areas. The projects should, should be done sometime in July, if everybody doesn't get a lot of smart, and it's like, uh, the wall center, and that project's done, they will also need to pay that, where it's like fire, and, and, so we're gonna be covering like two guys, instead of one.
So, instead of, on my twenty-one, and twenty, twenty-four.
Right now, so Applewood County, you get a little Wapo County, the place, fire to ours, our township in Applewood County, you even gotta go to Davis County, Point Point, and they got to go to Wapo County, or they gotta go to Grove County, it's a Wapo County. Finally, you do a guy about fifteen, twenty minutes high life, or we even get called.
Not, let's see, each one is... All right, I saw a hand in the mouth.
I was just saying, we couldn't hear the first part of what he was saying.
Talking about that, uh, their, their, their communication system, they're gonna go digital, uh, which is clear, it's easier to communicate with the other places, and you, you don't ever get out of range necessarily, with those, with those things, so...
It's faster.
A lot, it's a lot faster.
Clear, clearer, you can actually understand.
We can say at the fire station right now, and maybe one radio will pick up Wapo County.
So, you know, we'll improve that, the response time and those kind of things. Right, the only other old business we got is, uh...
I don't know whether you're coming, the old business, the new business, or what. But there's, um, uh, practice with propane, uh, uh, I know we've covered propane before, uh, right now, there's two different places that people get propane, and they're right around the block, you know.
And we think that, we talked about that, I mean, we usually, wait, I think we need to call Hamilton to, uh, see if you can get a contract for, for, yes.
I signed up at, uh, Hamilton today for a dollar ten. When the summer fill, if you want a summer fill, they'll come in for ninety-six cents.
Well, that's probably something you, uh... So we have to, you know, you guys have the, we have, I'm, we're...
Well, I know there's been, uh, Eldon, uh, in their, uh, minutes, in the maker, uh, B and B contracted with the city of Eldon, but all of these are...
So, if we need to, uh, if we were gonna go with B and B, then we have to, we should, uh, we should, uh, get, I mean, both of those, is, you know, the contract, the point, with the account, I think maybe you can call Hamilton, uh, whenever, uh, and find out what would be, uh, going, or, uh, you tell them, while they're talking to B and B, and, and, you know, why, you know. This will be for your bill, your bill, you talk to Bill and Bill. Yes, Ed?
Uh, the cost, uh, sometimes depends on who owns the tank. If you, you switched, uh, uh, carriers, and the other one that owns the tank, you would have to buy new tank, they do know that, or something, yeah.
Uh, B and B rigs a tank, uh, that costs twelve dollars a year, but the tanker out, if you use seven hundred and fifty gallons of propane a year, there's no rental.
So, just a couple of, uh, we need to tell our agenda for next semester. The other old business, uh, thing, it was up to the audit, and I'll give you a report last time we met, which I don't remember, plus, and all that, uh, and I'm gonna meet with Mike today, and she's in the, we're in the process of, this, what we're auditing, was filled out, a lot of them, we're putting the legs by hand in paper, and part of them were on computer books. So, we're in the process, now we're getting down to the end, that, uh, taking the paper, and then telling, just putting it in the category it should be, in the computer system, and they get that to him, so he's had all that in one place. So, we're getting closer, and that, if we ever do this again, and, I'm sure we will, but it's not my lifetime, but it'll be a lot easier, because everything's gonna be, Alberta now is going, she's going through the process of going through the checkbook, and everything, and said, we're ready checked, it's been done, and she's putting that in a computer, to get that, as to the, where, where the money came from, where it counted, the money's going to, who it's been written to, and the amount and the check number. So, so the next time anybody comes in, what we can find it is they're looking through boxes and shoving through paper, so, that's a daunting project, but it's something that we need to be done, and it will save us a lot of time, and, yeah. All right, is there any new business? Alright, the dream new business. Yes.
I didn't know if I'd come being a public company or not, but are, are you, are you gonna do anything sort of more efficient?
No, I thought about that this morning about four o'clock. Well, really, it was six thirty-six, when Jameson came upstairs and he spent a night last night with Noel Ford. I said, where's your brother? Well, she's asleep, she was, he got up at five, so she could get downstairs, and so I came up. And I, I don't like, maybe, look at that, yeah, we haven't talked about the fourth of July. It would, it seems like one time long ago, someone mentioned something about it, we haven't done any, any, any decisions about it.
It's gonna be passed by.
It's gonna be passed by the next meeting, so.
Well, I think we mentioned that, we were talking about, um. Not having any, too many, or.
Yes.
Part of it was to become humble, so at that time, we were talking, we were probably, uh, 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 uh. Whether it seemed that, was it something anybody wrote on or?
No, it's, it's one, it's many months to get together, and then we're taking them to meet up there in the fourth of July, and play games and go out in July, or. It's a, it's a community art. But as far as something official in the city this year, we can, uh, we can, uh, do, uh, sure, I think. Okay, I just want to go to the, we, once you stop them, and maybe, uh, maybe, uh, back to, uh. Do you have to answer your question? I do know that, we've got, uh, we've gone with a church and park on that. And I noticed that Christian churches, uh, planning on doing something, a couple evenings during the summer, a movie night on a Sunday evening or something, so. We've talked, this is, this is not in the minutes, it's just since we're here meeting, we're not making decisions, remember we talked about having that, this is a appreciation, something, um. We talked with, uh, Mr. Ray, and he said, he'd like, they, the church would like to do, to be, to like head it up, and this, the church was, uh, that, uh, we, we use their building, and we do it in the community, or whatever. And they would help with their expenses and all that stuff, and, uh, I don't have a date, I think it's something, for someone. We start from hiring a list of businesses in Lakeford, uh, I think that we would, uh, erase, not in Lakeford, but I. Spent a lot of money and time here. Is the race not important to the race for community, I mean, lawyer here, he's not really interested in us, uh, but, I mean, if we could compile the list and then do it sometime in the future, we'll maybe, then actually meet after that. Yes, ma'am?
One more question, um, can you let us know where you're at with the three pairs from the gas forms last year, which was one of the three years?
Uh, as far as I know, they should convince you one day to measure the thickness, the thickness of the metal.
They're, they're, the last time you did, you were trying to figure out the color of it and, um, to get it, to make sure they had it in the correct color. But say your, so, so, my, the Federation, so, for the trade with men, set their slips and take a walk, and suppose of that, and.
So it's, it's gonna start happening here soon.
So has there been any movement at all, has to, um, there expressed about the city and what the in quotes they have?
Yeah, we, yes.
Okay.
Yes, so.
Okay, that's a word that's.
And that probably is, I mean.
Okay. Did that catch the museum?
Yes, yes. Can you, um, I'm sure you wanna say something, Mike?
Yes, sir. Did the lawyer ever get back? You s, you said last month, the lawyer was like, figure out what he was gonna do with these, uh, houses down there.
You know, oh, we do have a letter from, this is not official business.
Those old businesses are.
She, uh, I read on an email, that's right, Heather's email, was, uh, the estate for the house behind the ball field. The letting, the lawyer of that estate went, so now then it's to somebody else, and so, yeah, we, she, she emailed it, and I read it today, but I can't tell exactly what that is. Pardon?
Is it from D and C for the past year?
Probably is, uh, I don't know, I don't know if Heather's any comment about that, and probably will have something on a couple of others.
Like, oh, I was talking about my sixth down line.
When you come over the bridge, there's what, three empty houses right there on the right?
Three on the left.
Well, I mean, there's three empty.
Three, three on the right, and then you come around the corner, you got.
Yeah, we got.
Three of them.
The thing is.
And the hole.
We, the hole was, that, that nuisance had been evaded when you put the fence up.
Well, I thought, I thought you voted, sending letters to fill the hole first.
Well, the hole he filled, it settled, but did not, yeah, but, but I talked to the attorney, so, once he put the fence up, that, that nuisance of the hole was evaded. He's done, eventually, I talked to him, he's gonna put the four foot, he was trying to get it done from there. Uh, you know, go from there, as far as, you know, cutting the grass and all that stuff, that's another issue. I, my personal thing, I'd love to see all three of those, first, especially those three of you come over the bridge, and let's see all those go on. Problem is, if someone wants to give us a big check, we can do that next month.
I'll give you the box matches.
So when the, when it burns. You're gonna die. That's, you know, there, there, there's a process we have to go through, and, uh.
But when you, when a guy can catch five and six coons a night coming across out of that stuff, now, shouldn't it be a nuisance that something should be even done?
Well, if you're catching coons, I gotta, I gotta, well, honey, we're gonna need it. Yes, Bob?
Didn't, uh, I'll be getting in a situation where, you know, they had a house like that, and I think it was fifteen thousand, the city allowed you, ended up with it, and, and the lowest bid was, I mean, it was.
Yeah, and it amazed me, I had. And that's the problem, is the, the cost to, to, you know, even if you condemn it, if you condemn it to the point that it becomes your property, then you gotta do something with it, and, uh. So let me read this letter here, this is about the house behind the, the wall field. This officer introduces the city of Lakeford. City of Lakeford has determined the property located, the nuisance has been evaded or demolished, this property also causes dangers of ending their building. You're hereby notified to the city of this house of nuisance and, uh, by codes, uh. You're hereby notified, the city council breaks will begin the fifteenth day of July, at seven P M in the council chambers. In event that nuisance that exists of the property have not been evaded, the house demolished, this meeting will be for the purposes of considering how to handle the property, this includes the possibility that the city would evade a nuisance or demolish the building. Please note that the nuisance is not evaded by the city or demolished, the cost for repairs and demolishing shall be assessed fees and costs against the property. In the event which will pose a way to handle this property yourself, then please, um, to the meeting or voice your proposal or send a proposal in office, and that's signed by Heather Simpson. So that's where we are for that, they got a new attorney handling this state, and, uh.
So can you clarify the process for everybody to know on what that, I mean, I heard you say a minute ago, that if the city takes action, then the city winds up with it, if the city spends?
Well, this one.
Or.
Sounds like it's, and the problem is, let's suppose we decide to demolish this house, and you assess those fees to the city. That doesn't mean anything.
There's no money, that's right, there's no money.
All the money that they probably had in the state was in the house. So it's just a pain in the losses, it doesn't make any, it doesn't mean you're gonna get any money, it just means that you're, you are. I have one that I won in nineteen ninety-four, and it's supposed to be ninety-eight cents a day until they pay it. I don't know what it'll be by now, but, uh, three thousand dollars plus ninety-eight cents a day, and I'm not banking on that. If I get it, I'll donate it to the city, and we'll do something, but I'm not gonna hold my breath for that. So, but this is the letter, so the next meeting, they're gonna decide something about that house.
But your, the takeaway here is that the city couldn't wind up with the demolition.
Yes, and, and then we, and we, like those other three, it's possible we could get, we could, we could condemn all those properties and then say that you have to demolish them, we don't want to. If they don't, we did, we can charge it to them, whoever owns that, but that doesn't mean this.
And who would pay it?
Whoever. Bob?
What if they, uh, just don't pay the taxes, let them go then?
Yeah, well, you know, and that's, that's a possibility, like, you know, if you buy a tax, a tax sale, and they, the owner has one year to redeem that. So you may pay the taxes for this year, but if they come within twelve months, and like, the four percent fee that's added to it, is two percent.
You're talking.
Month, and they, and they pay that before the twelve months is over, then the property goes back to them.
Could we not take the old birdhouse down and charge it to the prop, uh, lean on the property in front of it, that on the next.
Well, this, Bob, I mean, that's, I'll talk to Heather, we, we got the letter, and what she's, as long as they're gonna do, and, uh, ask them, ask them, you know, if they need, and say, we'll tear it down or. Get a match to Jane or something, I don't know.
But we could, could lean on the front property, it's initial, it's hers too.
It's hers too, that's a good question.
I don't think we could lean on that property, because.
For, for the work that we do here.
You got a judge against, personally, who attached it to the property.
Yeah, and, and what happened, we have a judge, we have, uh, getting stuff against, so that, well, they bring back their, the money, the papers that wasn't right, and how many years to do with that, like, for that year? And that's not gonna be made with yourself.